Good evening, welcome to the April work session for City of Hiram for regular meeting. We have the Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Winbush from Sweetville Baptist Church who will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Which word? Please, Reverend, and pray as first.
Please, Reverend.
Pray for him.
All right, first we give honor to God, give honor to the mayor, chief, councilman, all of us here. Let's go before the throne of grace. Our Father and our Mother, God, again, we have come with bowed head, humble hearts, gathered here in this place, God, to bring glory to your name. Because everything we do, God, we believe that should be pointed towards you and bring glory to you. We thank you for this opportunity, God, any opportunity to call on you is nothing but a blessing. Thank you for being our proud hearing and proud asking, God. As we gather here today, God, we lift up all of our leaders, we lift up our chief of police, we lift up our mayor, we lift up all of those in leadership positions. When you say any word, you pray for those who have a room now, God, over you. You pray, God, that you will look down on this community, Father, and speak peace, God, the community where we live, pray as well as where we work. Pray that you will speak peace in the midst of this confused time for which we're living. And then, Father, we ask you to look in on this meeting, and we ask you to have every conclusion, every decision that has to be made, God, we pray it will be made with wisdom from above and not earthly wisdom, that you would guide them, God, in every aspect of the work you've set aside for them to do. And we pray everything we do now be a blessing to somebody else, and most of all, that it bring glory to you. Now, Father, we turn it all over to you, for you always in control. We thank you for this and all of your blessings. In the name of your precious son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pray with Jesus. To the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. My pleasure, Mayor. Appreciate it, sir.
May I have a prayer for the chief and our mother?
We will. All right. Ivy Cass, front and center. We have our proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas children are the embodiment of innocence and hope for the future, every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. Sadly, child abuse is a reality, a problem we must relentlessly combat through awareness and action. And whereas every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many, and that protecting our children is one of our highest priorities, it is vital that we do all of our, we all do our part to ensure that our youth are safe and given the opportunity to have happy childhoods. And whereas there is no, there are no excuses for child abuse or neglect, but there are many consequences, some of which may last a lifetime. Therefore, it is crucial that children's advocacy groups, community organizations, government resources, and others come together to form a network of support that can reach out to those in need. When abuse or neglect does occur, individual citizens have a duty to report it to the appropriate authorities. And whereas by raising awareness to this issue and standing up for the safety of our children, we can help prevent child abuse and allow our young ones to look forward to bright futures. Now, therefore, I, Frank Moran, Mayor of the City of Hiram, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the City of Hiram, and ask all citizens of Hiram to join in the book, Paulding Child Advocacy Center to fight child abuse and neglect. Do you have a little presentation?
I do. Mayor. That may be a shirt this year, and wearing the same shirt every year. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen, for giving the proclamation. And we're doing something a little different this year. We appreciate y'all allowing us to present the first, second, and third place pinwheel coloring contest winners. Each year, this is our seventh year, we allow the fourth graders to be able to participate in awareness and for education in a positive way. So we'll ask the fourth graders to color a pinwheel that we provide, and then put something positive on there. And then we have a team of judges that go through all nineteen schools, and pick our second and third, and then an overall for the history. And since Hiram Elementary is, I'm here in Hiram, I thought, well, why not we make a big deal about this? They do citizenship, so why don't we see if we couldn't present these here tonight? The kiddos that are here, they know that they're winners, they just don't know what place they are, so they're very excited. And I do appreciate the kids participating. They were, I think, by far the best this year. It was a really hard decision, and again, we appreciate you doing this, for allowing us. So I'm gonna ask my helper to come on up, and look at them, and present these awards. And then I've got just a few things, and be done. All right, so. All right, and third place winner for the Hiram Elementary School is Leila Austin. And if you'll stay up there, so we can get a picture too, if you'll stay. Thank you. And second place winner of Hiram is Logan Triple. Guys, I'm going by these, these kids hand running sometimes, so I'm pronouncing anything wrong, you know. All right. And first place is, at the Hiram Elementary, is Gabrielle Rook. In each school, when we sit first, second, and third, they each get their own, their original art bag framed, and then we give them a medal, and on the back of the medal it says, take a stand against child abuse. I'll be out of the way very quickly. All right, you ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Before they move. He just wants your child, right? Thank you. Very good. Thank y'all. I've provided some things for you in your packet. Every year I come, and I kind of give you some stats and stuff, but there's some new things on the horizon, so I kind of wanted to share. Our stats, though, are steadily climbing, unfortunately. Fortunately, we are there to help and serve children, but forensic abuse, meaning new kids coming through the doors, would be 255 for 2023. Trauma-focused therapy is kind of short-term, but trauma therapy is 417. With funding cuts, we've had to cut our therapy program, so hopefully by, in September, I can kind of work that out and be able to get some of that going. But for now, it's on pause, not done, but paused. And then volunteers could be interns, it could be people at events, was 1,812 hours. And then the multidisciplinary approach, which everything that we do, every service for every kiddo or family existing, as well as new, was 36,533 services for 2023. As always, the community be invested in our center, not just us, you know, going around just asking. I want it to be a community effort. But you'll start seeing these, there'll be videos going out on social media, and you'll also see kind of a ticker showing how close we are, and it's gonna go on throughout the end of the year. So, anyway, I appreciate all of you allowing me to come here every year, and this year, just like I said, I wanted to shake it up and have a little positive spin on it, and we do appreciate you for your support, and thank you very much. Any questions?
Do you have any grievances today?
Yes. Okay, I will get those for you. And I also, in a bag, this was actually one of them for Hiram, for the doors up front, I've provided them for y'all, and I'll get those to Melissa. And pinwheels will be going up, hopefully tomorrow, if it's not raining, so. When it's not raining, we'll get it done when it's out. Thank y'all.
Our next proclamation is for Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We have the representative. Here we go.
Sorry, I just couldn't help myself.
Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. was founded on January 13th, 1913, by twenty-two collegiate women at Howard University in Washington, DC. And whereas it is a private nonprofit organization whose primary focus is public service to the local community and the major programs of the sorority are based upon the organization's five points of trust, thrust of economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. And whereas on April 22, 2007, the Grand Chapter approved a new Douglas Carroll Paulding County Chapter, Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., that parallels the Grand Chapter mission of providing assistance and support through established programs in local communities. And whereas the Sisterhood joins in, joins more than 200,000 members and 900 chapters across Georgia, the US, England, Japan, Germany, and the Virgin Islands, Bermuda, Bahamas, and the Republic of Korea, contributing to the growth and progress of the state and its local communities, and this chapter merits recognition and support. Now, therefore, I, Frank Moran, Mayor of the City of Hiram, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 9th as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. Day in honor of all the hard work that they do for our community. Pictures. Get the ladies a red up here. Thank you.
What'd you red start?
And now, last but not least, proclamation for Safe Digging Month. Leo? Chris? Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to the digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threats to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the attended dig site. And whereas the Paulding County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 911 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is shared, a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Hiram can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now, therefore, I, Frank Moran, Mayor of the City of Hiram, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Safe Digging Month in the City of Hiram, and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Hiram to always call 811 before digging.
We are in love with those hats. You gotta win, everybody, come on. Are you ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
They have a motion on item number four.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from March the 5th, 2024, regular session and March the 26th, 2024, work session.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes, I will abstain from the work session of the 26th because I was absent. Undervoted.
All in favor? Opposed? To motion passes. Board of Ethics appointments for the 2024-2026 term. Mayor Moran to appoint an Ethics Board member. Dr. Colonel Moise, he's willing to serve another term. They have a motion on item number six.
I'll make a motion for the city council to appoint Ethics Board members.
I see.
John Moise.
John Moise.
Okay, I was gonna, okay, so number five, that is mayor's appointment strictly. So mayor, if you're appointing Colonel Moise or John Moise, then the council doesn't do anything with that one.
Okay.
So then number six is strictly a council appointment, so you have to name who you're appointing.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion, city council to appoint the Ethics Board members Vivian Smith and Angela Hartsfield. No?
So Vivian Smith is eligible, and Ms. Hartsfield is not.
Uh-huh.
And number six, you're just appointing one.
So that'd be Vivian Smith.
Vivian Smith.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? May I have a motion on item number eight?
I make a motion to select a date, time, location, and facilitator for the council retreat.
May I have a second?
Hold on, we would have to name actually the date, the time, and the location of the facilitator.
Oh, I thought we established that last meeting, okay. So the location?
April 20th. And the location is the, uh, the reservoir retreat.
Okay.
April 20th?
April 20th.
Okay.
I think that's not gonna work. I mean, y'all can go ahead and have a laugh, I don't think I'm gonna pay a lot to you. It's just some hangup, the sun's moving, so I'd like to drive, have them drive up there.
It's up to you, we can schedule it for a time.
No, no.
Okay.
Say 20th, 50th, County Reservoir.
Okay. Okay, sorry. So select, we're gonna select April 20th, from 9 to 4, at the Paulding County Reservoir for our council retreat and the facilitator. Unfortunately, I found out today that the offer that was made by Mr. Harrison, Harrison is no longer on the table, so I think we're going with Rob Hosack.
Rob Hosack.
Hosack.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? May I have a motion on item number nine?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-02, the false alarm ordinance.
I'll second.
Discussion, chief?
Yes, sir. Since you took the last presentation, we made some minor modifications to the ordinance on the final pages dealing with section 22156, which is the enforcement of provisions. In the original draft, it was a civil issue where we would file liens against the location. There is a number of issues with that. First of all, the personnel, the overwhelming personnel cost that would be involved in that. The second would be issues of, because these are addressed to the address and not to the actual person, you could have a situation where a person is either a leasur or renter of a property, tallies up a number of these cases, and then abandons the property, leaving the homeowner to say for alarms that were not their responsibility. Therefore, we asked the judge of the municipal court, he is willing to take these on as ordinance violations, where the individual will be cited and brought before the court for disposition. And again, nothing has changed as far as the fine or fee structure. Again, up until the third occasion, it is free, we will warn them, but it's free, and then we start with $50, and then it increases from there for false alarms. Again, understanding that we're losing 2.74 weeks of productive time every year for false alarms, costing the city over $1,500 in cost to answer these alarms. The second part of this is also a change from the original, which is section 22157, which remanded all of the appellate to the chief of police. I think it's inappropriate that if we're enforcing the ordinance that I'm the, that I'm the person that they appeal to. It does not appear that this is, I don't believe that this is the right way to address this issue. Therefore, those appellate rights will now be explained by the judge in the municipal court, and all appeals will be through the municipal court's processes. So those are the two changes that have occurred since last time.
Any other questions?
Mayor, do you want me to rephrase that with the changes stating the sections?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance of 2024-02, the false alarm ordinance, with the changes made to section 22-156 and section 22157.
Just, just to clarify, I think there is a motion on the table. It's been seconded?
Yeah.
With those changes?
No.
Well, I think the motion that is up there is what's in the agenda for your consideration tonight in the ordinance, and my understanding is those changes are what's in the council package.
Okay.
As well as what's up there to sign.
Okay.
And the agenda is this modified or amended ordinance.
Okay. Sorry.
All in favor?
Not with it.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, discuss whether to terminate hotel-motel exits tax agreement with Hiram Hospitality League.
Mayor, if you mind, let me speak about, before we make that decision.
You have five minutes.
Good evening, the mayor. The council. White table.
We just wanted to briefly make, talk to you about the agreement we made with the council. The council came to, my husband and I, are Catholics, we set the rules for council members at the time, and one word that was put to us to do is prepare some events, and that's something that's been very successful. The first year, we sold over 250 hotel rooms in Hiram, drew fifteen, uh, from fifteen states around the country, from Michigan, Wisconsin, New York, and Texas. The first year, we brought in between 150 and 250,000 to the local economy. If you look at Hiram Hotel revenue reports in 2022, all the months except for the ones the HHL-sponsored events at Sparkles were down. The report for 2020 and '23 did not see but more people attended those events than 2022, and so it's even better. This year, we added an event, my husband convinced the RISA to hold their regional conference here in Hiram. We have people across America talking about Hiram. The city of Hiram embarrassed my husband when nobody from the city appeared at the first-ever business conference held in Hiram. Shows that they don't care about the hard work he's doing to bring people to this city. Not only did nobody show up at the conference, but he got absolutely no admission on this. We have a successful business that does not need the trash talking of anyone. If my husband wants to continue doing these events, we and other board members have arranged him to move it to Kemisaw because the council is not taking, that they should be wanting to have the 250,000, 300,000 dollars in their local economy. Below, when we were asked to do this, and we came on board, the council had to approve our budget. Everything that Ms. Barrett Bardell has said about the budget was on, everything that she's claimed was not there, was on the budget, granted. She claimed the floor preparation, but speedway is not a compliant expense. That was on, line height on the budget with the board, not included in YouTube, this on the board. You approved it. You approved everything on that, on that thing that we set forward. She complained about the DJ's house, once again, that was on the budget, included by the council. She complained about the money spent on Lisa Dunne, once again, that was on the budget. She complained about Sparkles getting the gate at the door at one of those events. Again, she paid, agreed to pay John Grant's salary and benefits. She complained about the 600 to Samantha at the place, it's happening, she's here tonight, and that was on the budget. We put that on the budget that this council approved, and you want to come back and say that we're noncompliant? That's not fair, that's not right, and everybody in the city of Hiram needs to know it. As far as I go, as far as it goes, I'm here to protect my husband's reputation. He believes in reputation matters, and that's why he's hurt by these standard, uh, splendors lots that Ms. Bardell, Mark Delfin's bringing about my husband. And he was a former president of RISA, he sits on the board of directors on the People's Bank, he's on the board of directors of that church, he's a man of character. I'm questioning him about money, it's absurd. The other thing we talked about with George and Cody, we, Ms. Bardell says she's talked with a man named Mr. Booker. I had an email from the DAC, there is no Mr. Booker, he is unfamiliar to anybody there, and he said there's been about ten people called about information, and he said, "We don't provide any information," when she says that there's been red flags, I would like to see the evidence, because she's prepared, no evidence of us being noncompliant, non whatsoever. And this says, "Providing the same essential information, directions, review the statute, and seek advice from council. We do not offer advice on specific hotel-motel exits tax matters. DCA offers no conclusions outside of the formal complaint process provided by the state law." Here is the state law. And on number four, it says promoting tourism, conventions, trade shows, means planning, conducting, or participating in programs, information and publicity designed to attract or advertise tourism, conventions, or trade shows. There's proof, I, I offer you proof, she's given no proof. She says a lot, she talks a lot, but doesn't give any proof of anything. So if you're gonna base your decisions on no proof, and for false alarms, costing the city over fifteen-hundred dollars in cost to answer these alarms. The second part of this is also a change from the original, which is section twenty-two, one fifty-seven, which remanded all of the appellants to the chief of police. I think it's inappropriate that if we're enforcing the ordinance that I'm the person that they appeal to. It does not appear that this is, I don't believe that this is the right way to address this issue. Therefore, those appellate rights will now be explained by the judge in the municipal court, and all appeals will be through the municipal court's processes. So those are the two changes that have occurred since last time.
Any other questions?
Mayor, do you want me to rephrase that with the changes stating the sections? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance of twenty twenty-four dash oh-two, the false alarm ordinance with the changes made to section twenty-two dash one fifty-six and section twenty-two, one fifty-seven.
Just to clarify, I think there is a motion on table. It's been seconded?
Yeah.
With those changes?
No.
Well, I think the motion that is up there is what's in the agenda for your consideration tonight in the ordinance, and my understanding is those changes are what's in the council package.
Okay.
As well as what's up there to sign.
Okay.
In the agenda is this modified or amended ordinance.
Okay. Sorry.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss whether to terminate hotel-motel exercise tax agreement with Hyrum Hospitality League.
May I, if you mind, just speak about, you want to make that decision?
You have five minutes.
Good evening, the mayor, the council. Why, table?
Hello, we just wanted to briefly make, talk to you about the agreement we made with the council. The council gave my husband and I, uh, Catholics, thirty-seven doors for council members at the time, and one word that was put to us to do is put heads in the beds, and that's something that's done very successful. The first year we sold over two-hundred-and-fifty hotel rooms in Hyrum drew fifteen states around the country, from Michigan, Wisconsin, New York, and Texas. The first year we brought in between one-hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to the local economy. If you look at Hyrum Hotel revenue reports in twenty-twenty-two, all the ones except for the ones that HHL-sponsored events at Sparkles were down. The report for twenty-twenty and three did not say, but more people attended those events than twenty-twenty-two, and so it's even better. This year, we had an event, my husband convinced the RIS to hold a regional conference here in Hyrum. We have people across America talking about Hyrum. The city of Hyrum embarrassed my husband when nobody from the city appeared at the first-ever business conference held in Hyrum. Shows that they don't care about the hard work he's doing to bring people to this city. Not only did nobody show up at the conference, but he got absolutely no recognition on this. We have a successful business that does not need the trash talking of anyone. If my husband wants to continue doing these events, we and other board members have arranged him to move it to Chemisol because the council is not taking that they should be wanting to have the two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand dollars in their local economy. Below, when we were asked to do this and we came on board, the council had to approve our budget. Everything that Ms. Barrett Barden has said about the budget was on, everything that she's claimed was not there was on the budget, granted. She claimed the floor preparation, but speedily is not a compliant expense. That was on a line item on the budget with the board not including you to this on the board. You approved it. You approved everything on that, on that thing that we sent forward. She complained about the DJ's house, once again, that was on the budget that was included by the council. She complained about the money spent on Lisa Dunne, once again, that was on the budget. She complained about Sparkles getting the gate of the door at one of those events. Again, she paid, agreed to pay John Grant salary and benefits. She complained about the six-hundred to Samantha at the place at Tadorn, she's here and I, and that was on the budget. We put that on the budget that this council approved, and you want to come back and say that we're not compliant? That's not fair. It's not right, and everybody in the city of Hyrum needs to know it. As far as I go, as far as it goes, I'm here to protect my husband's reputation. He believes in reputation matters, and that's why he's hurt by these standard, slanders lots that Ms. Barden from Art Dale's been spreading about my husband. And he was a former president of our state, he sits on the board of directors on the People's Bank, he's on the board of directors of our church, he's a man of character. I'm questioning him about money, it's absurd. The other thing we talked about with Sergeant Code, we, Ms. Bardell says she's talked with a man named Mr. Booker. I have an email from the DAC, there is no Mr. Booker, he is unfamiliar with anybody there. And he said, there's been about ten people called about information, and he said, we don't provide any information when she says that there's been red flags, I would like to see the evidence, because she's prepared, I have no evidence of us being noncompliant, non随意. And this says, provided the same essential information, directions, review the statute, and seek advice from council. We do not offer advice on specific hotel-motel exits tax matters. DCA offers no conclusions outside of the formal complaint process provided by the state law. Here is the state law. And on number four, it says promoting tourism, conventions, trade shows, means planning, conducting, or participating in programs under information and publicity designed to attract or advertise tourism, conventions, or trade shows. There's proof, I offer you proof, she's given no proof. She says a lot, she talks a lot, but doesn't give any proof of anything. So if you're gonna base your decisions on no proof and just by someone wanting to slander someone's name, slander the HHL, then make your decision based on that, but it's a poor way to make a decision.
Thank you.
And we have one of the hotel.
Chris is here from Sleep Ben, and he can tell you how much it's done for his business. And if anybody can show me where anyone else has booked hotel, beds and beds, I would love to see over the past ten years what has booked heads and beds in this city.
I'm just, he'd be done, the last week, last month, we had that Sparkles meeting or something, and all the water was filled up. I guess, that's the first time I heard about it, you know, SFR, companies taking the money or budget or anything like that. So that's what I'm trying to tell you guys, if he's there, then if you know the hotel tax coming up, or the occupancy, there are only three hotels in Hyrum coming in to bring their money. So my recommendation is, I'm not worried about SFR or any of them, but whoever the organizers the money goes to, they gotta figure out some ways so that all the, you know, people comes to the Hyrum. And I'm not a genius either, but you know, whichever the organizer, because I'm about the checkbook farmers or the money goes to, whichever, whoever it doesn't matter, either, you know, city keeps them or, but somebody needs to do if my hotel bring the money into the city, then if the budget goes from my revenue, make the revenue, then somebody gotta do something to bring that money back to it. I'm, we're not moving on, like, only the city gonna get some money, but, you know, we gonna get the benefits, everybody's gonna get benefit. If people comes to the Hyrum from any reason, or the restaurant gonna get paid, or maybe, you know, the gas station, or any of this, any of this gonna get a little bit benefit off it. So I'm not here to sell the SFR or anybody, or, only thing I'm here is, that's the first time I hear about so all the money and how the budget works. So whatever you guys do, then, you know, let all the three hotels people in all of it, or some other members in all of it, and then spend the money wisely, so that way we can bring all the tourists back to it. It's all about, you know, right now, all the hotels, all businesses, news is happening than what we are having coming in the pocket. The occupancy is going down, like, this year, last six months is fifteen to twenty percent down. And thank God, we are so lucky, the Hyrum has so much construction and so much thing going on last three, four years, so we was packed, though. So we don't have no corporate, there is no corporate coming to the Hyrum. What we think is the little people, those people only comes in the weekend. Weekdays is, yes, all the technicians and workers coming in. So those are the one we can make the, you know, money most of. Whole Atlanta market, I can, we have the report, all the hotels we could have the report. So the system will tell the whole Atlanta, not just Atlanta, even destines to tourist places, laser place, Savanna, all of them, they going down, that occupancy is down this year. And it started since, I believe in, you know, four. So after the November is, everybody's down. I mean, you guys, we guys bring the check every month, so you guys see them, say, how it's declining too, right? And those are the QD number coming out. So I'm saying, if you not want to take any action next six months, we gotta be so creative to keep the people what coming in the town, to keep it in town, or bring some from outside somewhere. You know, just a little bit help. Otherwise, yes, occupancy is down, whole Atlanta market is down, property is down, and there is no more construction coming in, in the city of Hyrum or one of them either. Yeah, there's QD project coming up, but they're locally, so they're going home every night.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Lots of video too, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Hey, guys, I'm Sharon Ham. I'm with the place, Hyrum, and I'm truly seeing a difference in what Jeff, Mr. Sparkles has brought in for us. We've done parties over a hundred, they come every six months. I mean, we, we all know there's a strip of restaurants, and we're not the purpose, we're like a little, you know, mom and pop restaurant. And we truly believe that if they continue coming in, I, just like the last guy spoke about technicians coming in or contractors coming in building, I have seen them in my restaurants. They don't live here, they are staying in a hotel somewhere. So it is affecting the economy, whether it's us, like you said, Racetrack or whatever, but I've been grateful for the opportunity of providing for them, and, you know, I totally agree with everything that's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you have the discussion?
Sure, I would like to, I am Ms. Byardell, Councilwoman Byardell that was referred to. Thank you for all that you do for the community. So me asking questions is not accusatory, it's asking questions because I took an oath to be a steward of our city's money. One, I did not vote in favor of your establishment receiving the funds because you are a nonprofit, you are a for-profit organization, and you would benefit and enhance your for-profit organization using nonprofit funds. I did not approve the budget because, in fact, I brought to your attention that you guys were listed, recognized on the Secretary, Georgia Secretary of State website as a for-profit business, which is why you guys returned to us and established your for-profit, your non-for-profit business. That's one. Two, the questions that I asked about the budget were items that were not on the budget as in regards to wine and dining, your patrons, your guests. I had a concern, and that's the concern that I'm elected to be a voice for our city. So with that, I have a responsibility to ask questions when it concerns our dollars. Is, are those dollars being spent? So I called DCA, and the gentleman's name is Mr. Brock, B-R-O-C-K. I don't know who you were referring to, but it's Mr. Brock. And Mr. Brock has invited our city to reach out, which we have done. So we have spent a lengthy portion, a lengthy time, we've invested time, energy, we've met with Mr. Kui. I continue to support your establishment by sharing your events on social media. This is not personal. This is not a personal attack on your husband, Mr. Kui, this is not a personal attack. I still bring my children there. I have supported your establishment since I've moved here in two thousand and eight. So as far as slanderous accusations, there were none. And as far as approving the budget, I did not. As far as voting in favor and courting you all, I did not. But I am grateful that you were able to put heads to beds. But we all do know that tourism is not limited to heads in bed, but you did a great job at doing that, and we appreciate that. So I have, so I put this on the agenda because we were, we are discussing and exploring options on how to spend our hotel dollars, and that's why we're here.
Anyone else? Any visitor business?
We didn't vote on terminating.
It's not on there?
I mean, I'm sorry.
It's not, Mr. Chris.
Okay, but that's what you said.
It's just a discussion.
No, Melissa and I spoke about it.
The agenda of this discussion, whether or not there's a motion that's made by a council member, is up to the council.
I make a motion to terminate the hotel-motel exercise tax agreement with Hyrum Hospitality League.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second. Go ahead.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Four to one. Hey, do we have any visitor business? Okay. April thirtieth, work session, six PM, this building. April twenty-fourth, the Cops for Kids have the golf tournament at Creekside Country Club.
Just a couple of updates, actually, resulting from a couple of bids that we failed. We've done two bid openings in this past two weeks. One was for the expansion for office space at Public Works Facility. We had four bidders who turned down. We do have a successful bid on that, reviewed it, bringing, will be bringing it forward for your consideration, just wanted you to know the status of that. Additionally, we did, we held a bid opening for the Veterans Memorial. We received one bid at a much higher price than what I had anticipated it would be. So our engineer is currently reviewing that, and still at work products on the, we have a bid down, and I can tell you what the amount is, but I'm not asking for any action on that right now. But I'll talk to you after the meeting if you'd like to know. Secondly, we have another issue that has arisen to the sewer project for Grace Mill. We ran into another Rottweiler issue with GDOT that we're trying to work through. I will have further information on that as we go forward, but we're trying to figure out and work around on this current hurdle. But we have had successful conversations with the three properties we were originally discussing for a construction easement. So we're actually in good shape as far as that goes, and hopefully this is just a small bump, but it's, we're gonna give you all the updates.
Which office expansion were you talking about?
The office space, adding another office space and break room space inside the Public Works Facility.
Okay.
It was discussed several months ago, we got the bid done after we had the design created, and we've got a good set of bids to go off of.
Good. Thank you.
Bob?
No, I don't have anything.
Melissa?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion on item number eleven.
I make a motion to join the regular session.
I second.
All in favor? Okay, we're done.